All right, we'll call the Montrose City Comfort Workshop. Monday, April twenty eighth, four P M. You order, uh, local.
Kobe Nelson.
Michelle Arnold.
Tess DeLado.
Anne Laimer.
Joe Bobolo.
Jackie Hundy.
Sam Fours. Check down business. Banners, decorations for Highway twelve, current discussion.
Yeah, I was just kinda watching that direction on, obviously, we're gonna get new poles covered this summer. Late July and yes, into August. Probably be pushed out, um. Expect some plans of the poles came in, according to the spec I saw, there could be twenty-three poles, cause they're adding some like east. Um, which way do you want, so they are gonna come with a flag or a banner holder on the backside? And a flag holder on the front, that's it. Um, I'm kinda looking into banners. If we stay with canvas and, oh, by the way, yeah, they're different than the ones we already got, the length of the hardware is different, so. We're gonna need orders from you one, any, also, it's all been, but, uh. With that being said, twenty-three poles, canvas banner ranges from one hundred to four hundred dollars. Um, I think I know kind of what's up, there's also metal ones, not even passed around if they're making. Like powder colors and stay up longer, but kinda wondering beans, we're not putting up Christmas lights on them. Uh, what do you guys want me, you want seasonal banners, you want welcome banners, like how many do you want? Want to be part of the decision-making on design? Like, just some guidance here, cause there's so many different kinds and so many different companies. That's just the one that makes the metal ones now, so, and by the way, the metal ones are six to nine hundred dollars. But those would stay up probably all year long.
That was the way I expected to see of them.
Probably longer than a forty or so, on the powder color, hopefully never, but.
These are the banners about three hundred?
One to four hundred, depending upon what kind of quality you want. Then, then going into like specifics, like if you want Montrose's emblem on there, you want to say Montrose. But there's like, just Google banners and there's thirteen companies that pop up, so.
That four of them, what are you doing?
Yeah, um, just a direction, like. You want seasonal banners, you want Christmas ones, how many different designs? Like, I don't know.
Well, you know, I would say seasonal for sure.
So every season? Spring, fall. Every holiday, you just want summer and Christmas ones, or welcome ones and then Christmas ones? Kinda like what we have now.
Yeah, don't like Christmas, but just a winter type.
Like a snowsuit, like snow and flowers for summer.
So like a, what would it say, you want to say welcome or you want to say?
I'd like to see something with.
So the banners that you currently have that though, how long have those lasted?
And what do those say?
They didn't say welcome, they have sunshine on right now, the winter ones say, or the holiday ones say joy, happy, all the other ones. Happy holidays, I think, some season, season three, yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, if you want like the city logo on there, is what you're saying?
Logo is terrible.
Or like welcome to Montrose, obviously costs more. But, I mean. Getting different designs and. Some time and how many different quotes you want and how much you wanna spend.
What if it just said Montrose?
Just Montrose on? Oh, that's metal, right?
Metal, but yeah.
Just Montrose? What roughly do you want in the background, anything? So you guys wanna, wanna be able to pick the option, is what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I know this is expensive and devil's advocate. But we wanna do a minimum order of five of those.
Uh, you need to order like thirty-two?
No, no, I'm sorry, what the metal ones?
Oh.
I know it's an anecdote.
All right, twenty-three, but we need to order extra?
No. If you do twenty-three metal, that's gonna be insane. Yeah, I think, I gotta keep them or you gotta keep them in there, one style or another.
No, you could go like, if we're younger, or do them all the same, doesn't matter. Even the winter ones do, you want the winter ones to say anything.
Oh man, I think they should say, go away and.
Like seasonal greetings.
Just buy them with just whatever you want on them, so we're gonna, alright, I'll get you some things put together for a council meeting, so. You decide, cause we're gonna have to order them soon, if you even want them off this year, that many, I'll give you some options, so.
We'd at least have a winter anyway.
Yeah, mm-hmm, unfortunately, like I said, we can't get the normal, so. I mean, where there's a will, there's a way, but there almost have a door anyway, as far as.
Yeah, those are that's a draw, huh?
Yeah, if it lasts a while, like the material like that. Pretty much, I need a direction, because there's so, I'm not kidding, there's so many. So you wanted to say Montrose, the summer ones, right?
Yeah.
What would be Montrose for something along those lines?
Welcome, okay, but the winter ones, you want to say joy, seasonal three.
You could even say, or like welcome, Montrose, welcome, Montrose, like every other one or something, you know what I mean, so it's not.
Well, when I get some designs, I could pick, but there's twenty-three, it's sort of off, it's gonna be off, right? And we do have to order, we should order two to three extra?
Yeah.
Case of damage or? Okay, so you're looking at twenty-five, let's just say they're two hundred dollars a piece, that's probably one set, that's five grand. Five grand worth of banners, that's probably ten grand if you order winter ones, it's a lot of money. Right, so.
Also not being the latter ones, you're getting a banner.
I'm just, I'm assuming we're not doing metal, I mean, you want six, six hundred to nine hundred dollars a piece.
Yeah, they look great, but not at six to nine hundred a piece.
Yeah, alright.
Now, we got twenty-three of them.
No, and I, the reason I said five more, just entries in its own, that was it, main, main spot, whatever down here.
Well, you would only need two, your light poles are only. Only.
You gotta order five though.
And since a little more. Yeah, I think they look cool though.
Yeah, they do look good.
Alright, that's all I have on that, unless you guys got anything else? Are you gonna do a council meeting, or do you wanna do it in another workshop later on down the line, or?
We could probably do it another workshop.
Or you slash some emails, you guys?
Yep.
We have emails and pictures, we both got it.
Yeah, get some designs and then.
Well, I have a lot.
Can you interrupt me with your vanille now?
Nope. Totally illegal. I saw the question, the answers though.
And you only allow one follow-up, put in the shelter, that is.
The individuals weren't put on the poles, or who would be put on the poles, I didn't have, just like, put on the poles, so we would actually have to go. Fan, both brackets, the brand of pole. So. Yep, that is what it is, I'm just thinking what you can, and obviously, we have the plans put up, so that's all we're gonna do.
Alright, move on, important discussion. Okay, so this kinda stems from recent talks of chickens and some other things, but I mean, more on the city, um. Brought this up with Chad, but. We should have a discussion about how we're gonna start enforcing, whether that's hiring somebody or what, so, kinda hungry here and.
I thought, well, when we were hiring back the team, there was a lot of discussion that that person would be part of code enforcement. That was the.
I've thought about that, I personally. The way the climate is today, don't know if I want somebody from inside the process going off and giving.
A lot of cities are actually using either, like their local tweets, um, or hiring a code enforcement officer, seriously. I know, um, not that Ray Tony would do that for us, but, but like if we had a local, you know, PR, they would probably do that for us. Because of the climate, because things are getting a little more dangerous and we're trying to deal with people, um. And then we've talked about a couple, possible.
I think, I think, I'm pretty keen on all of the internal city staff here, perhaps we don't, the climate, just, yeah. If we looked into, um, like you said, I would say they're hiring now, if we looked into what the cost on that might be, the higher somebody to come in.
So I have had, uh, initial discussions with Buffalo, there, we're working to hire a full-time code enforcement officer. Um, initial discussion I had with them is possibility of being able to partner up with them and have them take on some, the actual. It's just a quick twenty minutes of stuff, you know, for the city, I don't know if I have it, but. They're trying to hand off four million ordinances, that might be something, honestly, they look at. Those are not hiring somebody, cause that, I don't think there was enough here to warrant a full-time officer. Um, so then what do you, do a part-time guy for fifteen, twenty hours a week, it wouldn't be that easy. Can you see enough for a warrant, fifteen hours a week, or is it just, hey, you want to partner up with somebody to buy? Couple complaints coming in a week, comes out, man, and, and, and.
I think that would be the time, no, I'm just thinking, I think everything, it starts with, you can start with an hour, and then a half, and then. Two to four, or two to four hours, I don't know. On the app, it's part of it, the letter writing, the follow-up, we could be, that could be back in house, right, and there's nothing. Confrontational about sending a letter, so that admin portion of it wouldn't be there always either, so.
It would be boots on the ground type.
Yeah, so once there's a follow-up then, so let's just say you sent a letter to me and I'm angry about it, and you come in and send a. Exactly, so why are we hiring somebody else to do that, when it's gonna come back here anyway?
I mean, I think you bothered, I mean, somebody physically being on your property, a little bit different than somebody coming in and having a discussion about.
I don't think anybody's on anybody's property though. I mean, typically, I mean, you can, you can drive by my house, it's all, all, HS, like a two oh five, you know, it's, there's an issue there. Um, I don't know, we, actually, we talk about our budget and how we're crunching things so much, I get it though, I guess, cause it can be a very hassle thing, I get that, but.
But again, we're still looking at. Fifteen hours a week, at least. Or now we're taking fifteen hours a week out of staff time, in order to do that, it could be like, you know, other things. Know that they're cutting out that business, so, I guess we're waiting for what probably comes here.
But the staff is the one that's still writing that letter, as I said, they're still doing all that red work. But I do think that the, and I don't have strong feelings about hiring somebody or doing it in house, but I do think from the administrative standpoint, like that's something where you can certainly take on. That person coming in and saying, you know, I need three grass letters to be addressed, I need that, you know, like that, and then she's got a template, and she can do that piece of this. Um, I think she certainly at this point has time to add that to her, I mean, you would know, that's what I was probably, but I think she would have time to do that. I'm just agreeing on the scheme, that she's been, you know, where, she's been failing a lot of her nights, I hope she has to.
Most code enforcement in town could be just done as driving by, too, having that person just driving through town, a lot of them, you know. Not gonna be a lot of, you know, entering people's properties and stuff like that.
Right.
So, step one here, do we look at people in public works?
I would just say that we have five guys that are running around all day long, and we all drive around all day long, you know, along their neighborhood or wherever. I mean, I don't have issues, just know, I took pictures and all, there you go.
Well, that needs to be a singular person in charge of it, and then if they need the boots on the ground, and you decide it's public works, that would be my, but. The clerical part, that person needs to be on it, no matter what, so, I mean, that's totally up to the council, right? Um, like with anything else, we try to never just send a guy on a property by themselves.
Yep.
So, it would be two guys that, that need to be entering the property or going on the property past our minimum, um, minimal.
Which you almost never have.
I was gonna say, what are we actually coding for?
Well, if you do chickens, you're gonna have to walk in the backyard to check up the coop, or whatever, you do like inside fencing, garbage, like, you know, there's. Mowing is multiple.
I mean, just never, just as a mow.
Not even through the backyard, I mean, you have to get out and actually walk up, and, you know, take pictures and document it and things like that, so. To say it's barely ever, I would say fifty percent of that is going on the property.
Would you agree with that?
So.
You think a fifty percent is how you. That's what it is, I mean, I have had to go on like in a green property, go look at people's backyards for, um. But you just can't see it through backyard, and you can't really write letters, and you just can't go through these. Um. And when you access it that way, it's usually if that's the person that's complaining and they allow you on the property yet, but that's not competition at all. No, but, unless the neighbor is there. And I'm not saying that there would be sometimes, I'm trying to be, so if you're employee time, like would it always be two people, probably twenty percent.
Well, if you have to go on the property and you guys come inside with public works, I'm tempted to do that.
I try not to get out of my car, because I don't want the competition. Right, so, if you drive by my house, and you see a car sitting in my, in my breath, like nine, some of the people here in town.
Yeah.
You're not gonna take two guys to go on my property.
No, but I'm gonna wait for the call out, I'm not gonna drive around code enforcement, I hope that's not what you're thinking. Like, I will use my guys if you need to get on the property, but I do not want public works to actually code it for.
No, I mean, I'd, I'd still, I could keep the complaint based system, I don't want that guy driving around, but there's, I don't think there's enough going on, but I'm warned, I think it's still remaining.
Well, part of the problem is people don't know we're complaint based, and they think we're all going around and being mad, because why didn't you get my neighbor for X line and D? Because they didn't, like, you know, the lawn for six months, or the business was like, well, I didn't know, well, how did you not know? It's like, well, because we.
We don't drive them around, we're code enforcement.
And that's gonna be something that's gonna be more of a, a teachable thing, or a lesson, you know, but hey, we are a complaint based.
That's right, and we do tell them that, I tell them that when I talk about, um.
I did, to be honest, you have to let them know that we're not actively driving around looking for them, that if they have complaints, you know, um. I figure the way to do it is currently on the website to submit a complaint, um, but yeah, I think it's just, you know, informing the public. This is, this is how, this is the process that follows.
Yeah. I guess it probably just depends on person complaining, I mean, something that would bother, one person might not bother another person. Right. I mean, it just varies on when and how often we get complaints, so. But it also goes back to what our ordinances are, so if our ordinance says you can't have a boat in your yard, and we have most of the head full, or campers, or. You know, you can't park your RV down the street, and, and I did have like only do a lot of that last, last summer, you know, so I was moved for that, because it is a nuisance. Code enforcement's tough, I, I, I don't really have a clear solution for this, and you don't know if anybody has any ideas, or if you have other cities that are doing something better, different, whatever. Um, I'm open to hearing all of that, because code enforcement is tough, and I know there's a couple properties we really need to go after, and some of those. Might end up in like a lawsuit type thing, so, you know, that is where code enforcement, you know, yeah, cause like, it seems like, you know, things are so big. I mean, we judge it, but yeah, you know, I don't know, it's a, it's an ISO, and they got me something, the same thing as you do with your guys, we still have to find it, that we. We gotta start doing that for this stuff, you know, it's not always the best solution, and have the hostility, but.
But the problem is now, you code enforcement, they don't do nothing.
And we follow through with it.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you guys gotta stand behind, stand behind that when they come to a council.
Exactly, I mean, if we have rules, we have rules for a reason, I mean, that's just the way it is. And what does that look like, what is the penalty for not following the ordinance? What is that, but what is this, is that a fine? It's a fine, and that gives. Well, it's a fine until we go further and do a payment or something legally, you know, I mean, but that involves. You know, city attorney and probably going to court and taking it to small claims court kind of a thing, yeah. Which is, that's a huge job in and of itself, I mean, that would take up all of my time, if we were gonna do something like that, so, I mean, I need direction on. How much we're there is code enforcement, how hard, you know, how far we're gonna take these things? Because that really care about property is, yeah, choice is quite that. But we care about that all the time, we can handle that one, so.
It's like how hard these code enforcement is to the point of what, like.
I mean, I don't wanna get to the point where we code enforcement people, so they, they screw this in the detail, we don't wanna get that far.
But when, again, when we have like our C E Ps, and then send this down the road, why, why would we put it in place if we're not gonna follow through with it, you know, it's just. And does it start with maybe re, like, you guys looking at, or maybe like, who is the supplier to it anymore, do we care about this, like? Right, you know what I mean, like, maybe some of those things were written at a time where it's like, this, this is not important anymore, you know? So maybe that is a starting point, is to dive through that and be like, throw, throw this out, now we've got these eight or these fifteen, or whatever that looks like. Are we comfortable with this, and how do we wanna measure this, and prove this, and, cause there probably are some things on here like, that you guys, that are silly.
We need to do a deep dive, and do it, you might find one that'd be like, oh, we need to really add this one.
Sure.
You, you, you might come to that conclusion, we don't know.
Yeah.
Very good, see, I think we started with a deep dive into what we have for ordinances and try to see if we can. Clean some of them up, and see what we really need to, that would be very funny, and then work out, once we have them all set, what, how to go forward. I'd like to see how many properties that actually have.
Well, again, the multiple complaint things, we talked in.
There's multiple, you're just talking how many properties have issues with, but it's like, how many properties are we actually getting complaints on, or?
Yeah, very few, yeah. Very small number compared to what we show, how we look at, or how to complain face, because. Person complains all the time, but literally, you know, it's not actually a place to yell at grass, got a little long, but not consistently.
Well, and sometimes code enforcement turns into neighbor's peace, and then that's a whole other, right? Or with always a neighbor's. With always a neighbor's, and they just complain about everything, because they need their neighbors.
Yeah, and that's where code enforcement gets tough, when you're gonna complain about everything.
Is this, is this legitimate, or is this just them fighting with each other, or prove that, right, get proven.
It was one of the first things I heard when I, when I bought my house, was that the people kitty-cornered, called the top of the previous owners. So many times, it was ridiculous for having a fire in the driveway, I guess. Well, there's an item in this same time.
Yep.
Yeah.
But I don't know, it wasn't there, I have no idea. My guess is it was nothing about nothing, because people were just irritated, that's.
But, but you get like on that, right, it's like color, you know, that's the thing to do, is when you understand some of that, it's like, we don't have bad.
Well, this goes all the way to, and I'm not talking just properties here, there's like water meter enforcement, code enforcement, and all this stuff, so. If we start this and do this, you gotta need to stand behind your code.
Well, like Dan and I have been going through all the meters, making sure that all the meters. Full-time personnel, so. Yeah, making sure that all meters work and this works, and there's a couple people that their meter literally just three zero every ten a month.
Oh, here's the problem.
Like, okay, well, can we get in, look at your meter, no, it's like, well, we have a, we have a fee and our fee schedule, but since we can charge them fifty dollars a day, we're not giving us access to the meter. But then we have it on tape, that we told Matt Leir, we don't have to have, you don't have to give us back us here either, so then, there were people in the city that we were charging higher to that. And I had to stop charging, because it can't be one thing for one person, you know? Right, right. So we just have to find a, and then come.
That's where I reiterate, you know, if we have code enforcement, like for me, it would be, okay, you're not letting me in to look at the meters malfunction, we're gonna shut you off. And then they're gonna be calling and emailing you individually. It ain't, uh, oh, we'll figure this out, let's have a meeting at city hall type of situation. You need to stand behind your code and the person enforcement, too.
No, I don't, I mean, if, if you had a water meter that wasn't working, I have nothing, nothing against you to show them off, if they're not, if they're not gonna allow access.
Right.
If they allow access, then that's almost the end of it.
I mean, if that's.
There's a resident in town for three years, hasn't let us in, and the water's off, so now what stuff do I go now? The water's been off for three years.
And your property was also listed.
Three years.
Then you call, um, you know, some, yeah, you know, they, they call us, ask me, what should we do? Yeah, we need that there's a vulnerable person living in your city, well, what should we do, I think, you know, people can do their job. I'm, yeah, I'm just telling you that's what we're going, okay, yeah, yeah, we, what we should do.
So I'm just saying, if we start. Yeah.
So, it's like, we're kind of stuck.
And I ain't gonna lie to you, I think code enforcement this time would be a lot easier if we had a local PD, that knew that there's somebody in the office we can go to, cause people.
We have four million dollars to start a lot.
Right, I get it, I'm just saying, code enforcement's a little, my point, I'm trying to get to code enforcement for a city that doesn't have a police force, is a little tough.
Sure.
Yeah.
And second.
That's my point.
Anything in the city code portion, not the zoning code, the city code portion is enforced by Wright County, but do they?
No.
Well, then that's when we need to get Wright County back in here, and have that meeting with them, but we've had that meeting, and it really hasn't gone anywhere. You know what, if I don't claim that month ago.
Yeah, but then we don't have cops, who are you gonna get?
Who cares, they're not doing a job anyway.
See, this is where it gets tough.
So, I mean, it, it just comes down to, but even not even like blaming, right, it's like, we're like coming up with a plan, right, like, we wanna do this, we use like. Hand, cover, everywhere, because, right. Seriously, if, if we're gonna do it, we just gotta do it, fight, go and do it, I mean, that's, everybody's been saying for years, we keep kicking us. Well, hand down the road and. Let's do it. There's a lot behind it, yeah, but I mean, like Dan said, if we're gonna do it, if we're gonna, if we've got code enforcement.
If we're gonna do it, then we need to hire a full-time person.
Yeah, if you're a real code force, then you would hire a full-time person to go after all these properties that are not in buying.
And that person's gonna be working with Wright County pretty close.
We don't have forty hours a week for, you know, people, that's twenty people in, but, twenty to below three weeks of working at a company.
Then we might actually have somebody.
It would be proactive, the enforcement, they just have to enter, and dealing with all the, maybe pull up with that. Dealing with the, the follow-up, and possibly court issues, and dealing with Wright County and having them help, and, you know.
Oh, wanna file a city vehicle? It's gonna pay the mileage to drive around with code enforcement.
Yeah, and I mean, it takes a long time, it does take a long time to drive around, you know, if I have a handful of properties that I can go through, it can take like an hour to drive all the way around town to pull over and.
Well, that's just complaint based.
Yeah.
This would be proactive.
Right, and then you can drive around town for two hours a day and let it stop, you know?
I feel like, I feel like that's a better statement, proactive.
I would say in the beginning, it's gonna be rough for wherever that person may be.
Okay, yeah.
Really rough, and be ready for council meetings, open forums to be attended well.
But if that's what you guys decided, that can't be a reason to say no.
Right, I get it. Like, do it. If you're gonna do it, do it all the way.
I mean, we're only talking about adding more.
And again, it's a town, I mean, that's a town where all, we're gonna obviously have more issues to deal with.
Right.
Not just, we are open with a threat and more police force, well, it's more houses, more people.
More issues.
More issues.
And I don't know if it would be hard.
We gotta clean it up.
It would be hard on fine and part-time. Someone that's willing to do it part-time.
Let's share with another city and there's rental, you know, like, there's some of other things that we could maybe justify hiring a person to deal with all of that.
Well, that's the thing, if you hire someone to do code for all these different things, I mean, cause you could be, you know, we have rentals and down, when the last time we hit those were checked.
Well, we're.
You know, I mean, there's a lot of different things that we could maybe add into there.
We've been talking about probably adding back on like original inspection things. Because A, there's a lot of rental properties, B, there's a lot of rental properties that are being created all the time because citizens are buying up homes when they come on the market and turning into rental properties unfortunately. Something with them look at it, like, is that a limit, is that a limit that? It's a tough, it's a tough market.
I know the Airbnb's we have in town with us, we can, that's all that thing.
I haven't actually heard anybody, nobody has ever called on short-term rental.
In short-term, I don't have a fire inspection.
Right, but like the, the rental property. So it would help keep so many properties, you don't have to really regulate it.
Accountable.
Accountable, and, you know, so that they're not just run down places that are, you know, turning into junkyards or whatever, if they can. Um, those are the properties I often have most trouble with are rental, for sure.
I really think those two go hand in hand, code enforcement and, you know.
Well, aesthetically, right? I mean, you just think if you're, if you are, if you're expecting something aesthetically, that property is just going to look better. And that comes back to code enforcement, right? They, they directly correlate. When I was told that land, um, the property owner, you know, at a higher standard, yes, to be like, you know what, you're, you can't just let it run down anymore, you can't just let it go to crap. You have to like give it up to the standard and we're gonna inspect once a year. And typically that would change the standard of occupants that they allow of that property, right? Because what they do to your property will directly affect you as the owner. Some code enforcement standpoint, city inspection standpoint.
And that goes back into, and then we start with code enforcement. The line and then the one.
It, it sounds to me like, especially if we're bringing back any kind of rental inspection, it's a whole thing.
Yeah, but. Because that person would have to be, like, a building inspector.
Yeah, they'd have to have certification, sort of, you know, through state, all those code enforcement. So you figure out what that's gonna cost, and we figure, then we gotta figure out whether it's with licensing. Or, you know, anything, anything of that sort, I mean, I don't know.
I, I think, I think the first thing we should do is. Well, let's look at ordinances first, like, Chris. But I think we should have a discussion with either Waverly or Buffalo about. Joining, I don't know, I haven't talked to Connie over here, if they have anything in mind for you, for code enforcement go. I've had some talks with Mayor Hanover, they're looking to do the same. They're kind of in the beginning stages of this also, but if we could share that cost with a neighboring city. I still don't think it's, I don't think it's a full-time forty-hour a week position. I don't see that happening at this time.
Well, it'll be heavier during certain times of the year, um, like in the summer, I mean, it could be the grass, it could be an issue if we have a lot of rain and whatever, um. Yeah, it does seem heavier during different parts of the year, with a lot of snow, troubling.
Yeah, I'm gonna tell you, if you full-enforce your ordinance on sidewalks, it's gonna be a lot, it'll be a lot of work in order.
But so, but so much of that is just administrative. I mean.
What do you mean by that?
Well, first of all, somebody's gotta complain, right? Now there'd be, I mean, we, I don't get two hundred calls.
So, well, what I'm asking is if you hire somebody, you're gonna stay complaint based?
No.
No.
Okay, so that means they're gonna be out one hour or twenty-four hours after the snowfall and writing up everybody that did do the sidewalk. That's gonna be crazy, cause there's a lot of people that don't.
I don't want, I don't wanna use it. I really don't, I mean. Cause then all you're gonna get guys is pushback.
Yeah.
So I didn't, I didn't show my sidewalk within twenty-four hours, you know, cause I was doing stuff about my effort for it.
Cause we don't even get the sidewalk covered in twenty-four hours.
Well, that's what your ordinance.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, and I'm not saying that you need to take that toll sometimes. I mean, people tend to always get to that, I'm not saying that it's a negative.
And that's where you gotta go back and yell at them, like, okay, this code does twenty-four hours.
Right.
Is it really feasible to get them done in twenty-four hours?
Right, it's crazy.
You know?
Yeah.
You mean, you could have people that go south for the winter, and they have a snow service that comes and does it. And the snow service is backed up because we just got pulled into the snow. They might not get it done for a couple days, knowing that that person was south for the winter. That might be on the last of their foot, something that's, we have to look at every single one of them that might not be able to do, you know, or might have to change something.
Well, right in the middle of conversation, so that's a climate zone. No, not at the, yeah, I mean, a lot of this stuff is in, right. So do you send all of us like the first twenty items? You know, we all highlight it and come back in a workshop?
That's all, like, all that comes on the website?
Yeah, all that comes on the website for now, I mean, it's being codified as a C bill, so if we wanna make changes, we're gonna do it now, doing it now, yeah. Otherwise, you're gonna have a bunch of amendments, you know, your code.
Or the true way would be that whoever the person may be, let them, look for your, let's bring them, his recommendations or hers.
Like what's reasonable.
What's reasonable, what's not, cause they're gonna be dealing with it every day.
Cause you have a, they have them twenty-four hours, this is reasonable, forty-eight hours, you won't use.
Yeah, and, and they're all there noticing that, that, hey, after twenty-four hours, they're not getting the phone after forty-eight hours, it dropped from twenty to two, you know?
Well, and is that a rule? I think you're a snowbird and you leave for them when you're, is it a rule that you have to have a snowplow service to sell, like shovel your driveway? Is that in there?
The sidewalk, for sure. You don't have to do the driveway, but leave, leave the sidewalk. It's not, a smart person would do the driveway as well, so they don't.
Just saying, yeah.
And most people, if they're a snowbird, they, they do.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we have to look at, you guys have to look at ordinance first. We get out, and then see what kind of needs is there, and then, okay, how much of this are we gonna heavily enforce? How much are we not gonna heavily enforce? I mean, there's a lot to that, there's a lot to that.
If you go heavy and you get, you're gonna take a lot of complaints, you're gonna take a lot of keys. If we went heavy to, to the letter of the law, then yeah, it probably wouldn't be a full-time person.
I don't know, I think from what we've been doing.
Right, no, I'm just saying, but that's probably a full-time person, whereas if we're going somewhere in between, it may not be a full-time person.
Yeah.
And you could split services with Waverly or Buffalo.
Or could we do fifteen hours, fifteen hours, fifteen, it sounds like they're like twelve, twelve and twelve, like, that'd be great for the three ways? You know, and then bring a lot of that administrative stuff back in? That can be justified, the cost will a little bit more.
And, and with the discussion I had with Buffalo, they didn't really kind of know what this person's work would be in particular. I don't really have enough right now that they think we're going for the full-time position. So, that's why I wouldn't really discuss it, sharing.
I mean, that would, to, to me, if you look at it, if we could share, say Hanover and Buffalo, if they wanna do that. I mean, you look at, you know, Buffalo can be three days easily, right? One day in Hanover, one day in Montrose, there's your five-day work week, right? I mean, you get eight hours out of it, and it's, one, one full day, you can do a lot of enforcement.
Is Buffalo gonna be complaint based, or are they gonna be someone who I won't pay for it? So is they're even gonna have someone to pull them, how would you?
Right.
Right. You know, to me, I think like, oh, if Waverly wanted something, maybe it would be fifteen hours here, fifteen hours in Waverly, and that person tops out with thirty hours. And it's possible there's a time of each of them that would fit in here, but the majority of people get a letter and cover the rest. They get a letter that, you know, that's fresh. I bet you, I would, you would have a better understanding of this, but it's like, how many of them really, like, how many times in life have you guys had to go out there and actually take action?
Well, we have, we've moved people's yards, tramp, you know?
Yeah, but inside here, how many times you've had to do that?
Not a lot, but if you actually go around code enforcement, you'd be doing a lot. Cause there's a lot of people that don't cut their grass.
Or they don't care, and the other is that.
Complaint based wise, not a lot. If you enforce to the T, it will be a lot.
But if we started off and had been complaint based, and then had somebody dedicated to that, right? It's like, if you go from nothing, not nothing, but like you go from this to that, that's gonna just chat people, right? It's like, so it's like, if you find something in the middle where it's like, we're still complaint based, but we have somebody dedicated to it, this many hours a week, like. And then from there, you can, you can do a better system of, yeah, measuring, engaging who you really have, and then kind of.
Right, then, right, it's like, that seems like maybe a little more better, I think we need our toes wet and we start to.
So, yeah, so if we say complaint based, you know, um, are you saying somebody in-house could still do the administrative work, or hire somebody part-time to do the administrative work? In-house.
In-house.
Yeah.
I would say, yeah, we, if, I mean, Waverly would be ideal, just because they are so close, you know, two days here, two days there, I mean, you know, part-time. You'd still get something part-time to work four days, you know?
So then what we would need to do is just get to make somebody in here to do the administrative work, have it complaint based. But then who do those letters come from, and then who is the person to talk to when?
Well, there's a lot.
That's what we would get to connect that, right? So Marie, our administrative assistant, would be dealing with people screaming about their connected law.
No, I didn't, it's me different, we were looking at sharing.
Yeah, you.
But we're not looking at that right now, we just have to open house.
The only house is the administrative portion, writing the letters and sending them.
Right, but that's you can add, and that's when that person comes in, right?
Well, what we're saying is.
Yeah, that's to the other.
Marie can write the letters, and then Marie gonna handle all.
Yeah, but your letter writing is fine, but like, the hardest part is dealing with them afterwards, and their questions, and they're yelling at you, or whatever.
They pass those, and then the aggressive part, right? The passes, the letters be aggressive is when they come in and they're like, I got this one.
I would, I would think that that then would be on the code enforcement office, that's what.
Yeah.
The letter would come from.
It's, here's, yeah. Here's the letter came from the city, but you need to come back and code enforcement person, and you can have all.
Like, we didn't see.
And oh, by the way, they only work Wednesdays for me to do, like, that ain't gonna fly.
Cause, I mean, honestly, it's been dirty for six weeks, and then here's a Wednesday. I mean, we honestly are gonna have to designate somebody here in the office to do that, because like you said, you can't wait till next Friday, what's up?
I'm just saying, I mean.
Somebody's gotta take on that responsibility here.
You couldn't give a card saying these are these hours for this people, but what if they, they've been enough, they wanna crack somebody right now.
The problem is though, is that the person that created the report, he has the importance of these. That's who it is. So they're the ones, that's who you have to start.
Because I think we actually have Marie put that person's name on the letter, and that person's cell phone. So, he's doing the work.
He had questions contact.
Yes, and then their number would be on there, and then they would.
With their name on it.
Yeah, and so then it's driving that away from us, it's like, we, you know, we, we're the pass through, but they don't, they don't have on here.
Your contract, no?
Yes.
Next person to do our code enforcement, your questions on your property, or why you were.
It's, and, and then that way to the person that's doing the code enforcement, everything is uniform with that one person, right? You're not getting multiple answers.
And it's almost the person behind the hurt, right? It's not the person helping you with your water bill, it's not the person that, it's like this, this pretend person that don't move anything, like, Brenda. Right, or it's like that, it's like this pretend person, right? They're not really managing, is that helping with something, or, you know, it's just, that, I think that that, that's a better feeling.
Yeah, the administrative, as far as writing the letter and stuff like that can be done in-house. But the person that creates the report and facilitates that happening, is the longer you would have to answer any questions involved with that fine or whatever you're.
And to the resident, that's probably the same person, because they get the letter, we do the letter, we send it out like it's that person sending the letter.
It's along the same lines of like road construction, you know, and, and we're doing downtown yet, where we're, we're gonna read the rest of the question, that's all the name.
Yeah.
They're not worth, all the name, so. And that's my, that's my thought, that's it. Okay, so do we wanna first look at ordinances?
I think that's our first step is to get them all together, you know, so that we're open, open.
Okay. Um.
There's a lot.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, I can continue the conversation with Buffalo, right? Reach out to Waverly.
It was a target.
So, I don't want, I don't want to. Where are they dealing with, where are they? We would be.
All the, all the, they all have more staffing to do, so we can use somebody on the staff, yeah?
All these others trying to do what they're doing. Plans are in future, they're doing, I can see them having, they're, they're thoughtful, so. So if not, we'll, we'll get their listings, and, and, not one by one, but.
Well, I'm also, well, probably not, um, it might be, maybe we wanna like turn it to different hours or.
So we want to.
You want to have a person standing, telling you where this, yeah, plus tell them right now.
Would, do we probably have a person in Smolber, Smolber, I'm guessing, has a small lawyer, or something? Before they start for the winter, small ones.
Uh, yeah, that's.
That's something we wanna aim for the next workshop.
Or do you think we need to do it before, because, I mean, I can, just that everything's going up on the website?
I don't know how long it's been taken to be codified, so. I don't know if we need to pause that process, I guess, I, I don't know.
I don't wanna rush it easy, that's the thing. Cause it's gonna not be fun to have all sorts of methods, but then again, you don't wanna rush through it, and do it quarterly.
Like, certainly we should get him to ask him what his timeline is, at least update him on how long, and so he knows that he's got that. This guy, any points? Yeah, I am, and.
I, I don't.
Are we, still are we gonna include that in that?
Are you guys to look at the ordinance yourself, or do we have, do you, I, I mean, on the website? It's gonna be mostly under like, um, like the nuisance ordinance, like chapter like fifty-ish, fifty-five?
So I think we should look at it ourselves, so if we can.
Maybe send it, you know, everybody where to look?
Yeah. Or, yeah.
Which one?
Yeah, where should we start? Do we take one section?
Tickets? Yeah, most of it would be like under the, the.
So if we just take a section and look through it?
Yeah.
Need for the discussion on that? It's for water meters discussion.
Um, so for the discussion, not trying to make it too complicated here, but you can.